Well, as you know, everything else. But I'd like to just say that, you know, I really support this bill because of the fact that it is, um... heartening to know that, you know, it does affect a lot of people. My dad and my mom don't smoke. And, you know, from that, I will try to teach my children that, you know, that is the right thing to do, you know. But I'd like to thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Uh, we'll hit the button when you're ready. There you go. Good morning, Aloha.
Uh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Robin Shershak and, uh... I'm here to say that, uh, I support this bill 135. I just turned sixty. I've been smoking since eight years old. I've quit a few times. And then during that process, a few family deaths have occurred and, uh, it got me smoking again. I try to, I try to do my best to discourage young people from smoking because it's gonna catch up with you, just like it is with myself and I, you know, and I'm responsible for my consequences. But I would like this bill to be passed because twenty-one should be, uh, an age where they should, people should know what they really want and not be misled by the tobacco companies. And they're trying their best. And I tried the e-cigarette thing too. And, uh, they fail to tell you that. They might say it's vapor, but you get lung, you get water in your lungs, and you're gonna die anyway from that. So there's no education in that, I think. Smoking should be raised to one, to twenty-one all the way around the block. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Okay, um, that takes care of the testimony here in Hilo. Let's check in with our other sites. Pahoa, is there any other testifiers at Pahoa? Or any other site online?
Hi, good morning, Chair. We have one testifying here.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Miss Leslie Wingate, representing the Sustainability Council. And she'll be testifying regarding the bills 119, 120, and 134 in opposition.
Good morning.
Aloha.
Yeah. Staff, why don't we, why don't we take a brief recess? Council members, don't go far. We're just gonna try and reconnect there. Really brief recess.
Refresh. Just refresh. Flash crash is the first time you use it. It's okay.
We'll go too far.
Yeah. Refresh. Happened to me too. I had to refresh. It always, like, two minutes in, it crashes every single time. And then it's fine usually after that.
Peter, I don't know why I'm not thinking today. My brain hasn't, like, engaged.
I am brain dead myself.
I have no excuse. I wouldn't hear last night.
We were out here by six thirty. Did you hear about that? Convened a special meeting at two o'clock in the afternoon and, uh, called it a day at six thirty. Because we're just stuck here. Back on the nineteen. Yeah. Why do we, and it's so...
Oh, there you are. I just texted you. Yeah.
We have a question.
How's your boss? He's okay?
He's upstairs. He'll be coming down.
So he's just got banged up a little?
Oh, I didn't ask her how he's been.
Can you folks hear him? Hello?
Maybe he shouldn't come down. Maybe he has a concussion or something.
Yes.
Okay, he can hear us. Can you, uh, speak closer to the mic?
Tell them we were worried.
Okay.
Yeah, we were.
Okay, is this okay?
Yes, that's better. We're in recess right now. We're waiting for you folks to reconnect, so, um... Uh, I guess that you'll realize when the chair calls the meeting into session, they'll call, they'll go ahead and have you speak at the moment, uh, when it's on. But we are currently in recess.
Party break. Smoke 'em if you got 'em. Oh, that's evil. I know. Gosh. I'm gonna sign up. I gotta do it now, I suppose. I'm mostly irritated about the no road through the UH. I'm irritated. And I think this is final reading, I think. I haven't said anything yet. And they're gonna do it anyway. Brenda, Brenda knows. But, yeah, otherwise, they're gonna do it anyway, so...
They tried to sneak that one by windward planning commission by map. They had to...
Thank you. Yes, I was there.
Yeah, they didn't have it on the title of the, uh, of the item. And then...
I know.
They had to pull it back and come back another one.
Is that what it was?
Yeah. Because they just had it, they didn't have it as part of the title, so...
I remember, I mean, I just record everything, because I don't know what stuff is sometimes. Even when I read it, I don't know what it is. And that was one of those ones. I was just like, what, what are we talking about?
Yeah, so they, they come back and say, oh, yeah, and by the way, we're gonna get rid of the road. You know, it's like, no, that's like a major part of this town.
Yeah, and it's already kind of a big campus with no roads. And now we're gonna build more ginormous buildings. Right, okay. All right, maybe I'll sign up. Right. Okay, but where are we? Twenty-five dollars. Waste of time.
Okay, council members, we're gonna be calling the meeting back to order. We're back in session. Okay, Pahoa, can you hear us? Give us a thumbs up if you can. Okay, terrific. Just get started. Um, when you're ready, you'll be starting again, because we lost transmission just as you were about to begin, so please start at the beginning.
Aloha. My name's Leslie Wingate. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I believe I was first testifying on the, um, Pahoa Shopping Center. That's the issue most, um, fear to my heart right now, because I've lived in other places where it was a small town and then a big shopping center comes in. Um, especially with a big grocery store. It brings a lot more trash, brings a lot more traffic, people, and I don't feel like I would like to see Pahoa change in that way. And everyone I've talked to who lives out here feels the same way. They don't wanna see a huge shopping center inside of Pahoa. I think if, you know, developers are really determined and there are people that want such a big shopping center, then it would be better to have it towards Inaloa or, you know, somewhat outside of Pahoa, towards Telo. I think Pahoa is just too small to have that amount of traffic. And, um, the reason I moved here and the reason most of the people I've talked to out here moved here was to live sustainably, to have a chance to live somewhere where they have relatively clean air and clean water and they can grow food. And, um, I know that Hawaii and many states also have, um, some kind of thing in the government saying that we need to get sustainable by a certain date. And I believe that that's mainly dealing with energy, but I think that we need to really get sustainable in all aspects as soon as possible. Because if you look at what's going on in the world right now, our planet is really in crisis. And we live our lives like nothing's going on, but really, if you look at what's happening in the world, um, our planet really needs some help. And so does our species, if we're gonna survive and leave to our children, the kind of planet, you know, that we've been left with. And so I think that bringing in this shopping center really goes against creating sustainability here, because it's gonna import a lot more products. And I know in my own personal life, I try to eat local and I really wanna support sustainability here and, but I know if I go to a grocery store and there's some yummy packaged food, it's hard to not buy it. And so I know if a big, um, shopping center gets brought here, there's gonna be a lot of people buying a lot more GMO products and, yeah, just creating a lot more trash. And, uh, please keep Pahoa small and quaint and don't bring a lot of development here. We moved here because we want to be sustainable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And now I guess I'm gonna talk about 134. That, I believe, is about the DUI, the funding for DUI roadblocks. And, um, I just got a little bit of an update. I thought that it was just to stop people on the road at random times, but she said it's just mainly during holidays and, um, could be. So I'm a little confused about exactly, um, what that money would be used for, and it doesn't say it clearly in the papers I've read. So I'm opposed to any more money going to stop traffic and try to find people. I'd much rather see that money go into helping people not drink and drive, you know, giving them incentive to not drink and drive rather than try to arrest them when they do and make them pay a bunch of money. So I see a lot of people here that drink and it's because they're depressed and they need, um... There just needs to be more out here in Pahoa, you know, like, there's a lot of talk about a new geothermal coming in, and I'm thinking, we already have geothermal coming in and there's already really high prices on electricity and our community center here could use an upgrade. And I just would rather see money in Punah going to things that are gonna actually help people here and not make life harder for people. Yeah, thank you for keeping development out of here and helping keep this a small, quaint, beautiful place that can be a leader in sustainability.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Just as an announcement, Mr. Onishi has arrived to the meeting. Looks like he's still in one piece, so looks like he's okay. Welcome back, Mr. Onishi. Okay, our last testifier, she just signed up, is Carrie Marks, testifying on bill 122 in opposition. Good morning, Ms. Marks.
Good morning, council. I think this is final reading already, right? So, yeah, it says so on the agenda, so I had to sit down and say something. I missed the last few. I'm very concerned about the university, um, plan to remove the roadway. That's a bad idea. It's already a fairly large campus for a small school with really big buildings all over it, and it's hard to get through it as it is. It's hard to get around it as is. If you have a kid at Waikia or, you can't drive through there as it is. And they're already building up quite a bit. They've put a lot of new housing up and that's going to bring more cars. And when they met at the planning commission, um, they did talk about a university town center. This is not just, you know, a rebuilding. They wanna build all kinds of shops and stores. They talked about how if you're a university student and you live there, you can't even buy a roll of toilet paper anywhere. You can walk to the 7-Eleven, which is, you know, a block or three, depending on where you're coming from, and then that's it for a mile or three. So the idea was to provide, um, shopping so students could buy, you know, toilet paper and shampoo and that kind of stuff, and also to have restaurants. So, you know, I think it was Mr. Onishi last time that mentioned about an Applebee's or somebody, but that's, that's the plan. They wanna have a big restaurant there where the parents can come and sit and eat dinner, and you have no road through the middle. Noeloe is not a road through the middle, and it will never be a road through the middle. And if you take out this road, this eighty-foot right-of-way, guaranteed, the first thing they're gonna do is put a great big building in the right-of-way, so that that will never ever happen. So I strongly oppose removing the road. If you can change it to fifty and that's still cool, then maybe, but do not take the road out of the middle of this campus. It's already, it's a difficult campus to use. You know, we like to have movie nights and lectures and stuff there, and I didn't go to school there, and I've only lived here for twelve years, so I don't know the campus well. It's a nightmare for me to try and figure out where to park and how far I gotta walk, so we really, really need a road through there like yesterday as it is, let alone with the new Applebee's. So that's what I wanna say about that. And, um, I also oppose addition. I also oppose bill 134, the roadblocks. I don't like random roadblocks, drunk or not. I mean, I don't like drunk drivers, but I don't like random roadblocks even more.
You have a new?
I'll just keep going.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. That's, that's just it. Everybody hates drunk drivers, that's for sure. But, you know, I, I have an anonymous story about a guy, we'll call him Hubby, who was driving his family home from the movies one night and got stopped at one of these random roadblocks and didn't have the correct insurance card in the car, so we gotta take it for that. And he's forgetful sometimes, and he forgot to pay it. And so then he went to pay it and he went and, I think he went to the police station and they told him he was, there was a warrant around, out for his arrest. And, I mean, it, it escalates very quickly. That, you know, random roadblock and not having the right card in the car, because they hadn't stuck it in his wallet yet, ended up with three or four or five court dates, a public defender. I mean, it's money, 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 all the way through the system. So I don't like any of the random roadblocks and I want them to all stop. Mahalo. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Okay, um, any other person, uh, either here or on other sites that wants to testify on items on the agenda? If I don't hear anything, we're gonna be closing public testimony. Last call, if not? Okay, we're closing public testimony. Council members, we just had a break, so I assume we can continue on. Is that okay, council members? Okay. I have a request to take bill 135 out of order. I also have requests to take resolutions 190, 191, 196, and 197, which should be pretty straightforward, also out of order. My suggestion would be that we, uh, take care of the police and fire matters first, because I don't think they're gonna take too long. However, if there's something that I don't know about, council members, tell me, and then we can adjust our agenda accordingly. Any objections to taking the fire-police results quickly? Very good? Okay. Okay, so why don't we take on page five, resolution 190-13? Mr. Clerk, please read that in. Page five.
Resolution 190-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account for police department's community officers bicycle patrol. Transfers appropriates $6,000 out and from the clerk council services contingency relief credits same to the police department's South Hilo Police. Other current expenses, 109, equipment repair, maintenance, 235 miscellaneous materials and supplies, $1,750 uniforms, $595 helmets and gloves, $1,155 wet belt, $2,500 repair, tune-up service, parts and labor. Contingency relief funds from District Three will be used for the outfitting and equipping of a bicycle patrol unit for the bicy, and for bicycle repair, tune-up services, parts and labor. Reference communication 466. Mr. Onishi. Introduced by Mr. Onishi, waived FC.
Mr. Onishi.
Move to approve resolution 190-13.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I need to make a motion to amend, so I wanted to amend resolution 190-13 with the contents in communication 466.1.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion on amendment?
Just to explain, council members, what happened is the account number was wrong. The original they put was 010.201.5203, and it's supposed to be read 010.201.5207.
Okay, so it's a non-substantive amendment, so if this passes, we can just move it forward. Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Clerk, on the amendment?
Ms. Yehaw.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegan.
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Onishi.
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Chair Shimono.
Aye.
Chair Shimono, you have nine ayes on the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment passes. We're back to the main motion. We're gonna discuss and vote on this. Like I said, it's non-substantive. Any other discussion on the main motion?
Lieutenant Hore, you wanna say something? No?
No, he's good. Okay, so no further discussion. Mr. Clerk, on the main motion as amended.
Ms. Yehaw.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegan.
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Onishi.
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Chair Shimono.
Aye.
Chair Shimono, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Resolution 190-13 as amended is approved. Uh, next then, 191-13.
Resolution 191-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account for the Hawaii Police Department's McGruff and Crime Dog costume. Transfers appropriates $2,061 out of the clerk council services contingency relief credits same to Police Administration Division. Other current expenses, education, recreation, scientific, McGruff costume and accessories. Contingency relief funds from District Three will be used for the purchase of a McGruff costume to be used in classroom visits and special appearances throughout Hawaii County. Reference communication 467, introduced by Mr. Onishi, waived FC.
Mr. Onishi.
Move to approve resolution 191-13.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion, Mr. Onishi?
I think maybe, Mr. Lieutenant Hore, maybe you can come up on this and then just explain a little, since we got that phone call yesterday.
You can each do yourself. Morning, Council Chairman. Council members? Oh, I'm sorry. So my name is Lieutenant Darren Horeo. I'm currently the lieutenant in charge of community policing for the, um, for the police department. Uh, we have community police officers, school resource officers around the island, and, um, we currently have one McGruff costume, which we have for quite some time, and we use it around the island. So the addition of a second costume will allow one to stay in the West Hawaii or Area Two area, and the other costume to stay in Area One, so that we can provide more presentations and do more visits with the McGruff costume.
And then also, um, we're also purchasing this cooling system that's gonna be put into, um, the officers are gonna wear, because what I understand, right? They can last...
Yeah, ten minutes and they're, you know, they gotta change clothes already. It's very hot inside this costume, especially in Kinda Wacona. I'm sure you understand.
And, and, you know, it's really, um, I guess, it's really for the kids, right? When you go out to the schools and to these events.
Yeah, it's...
The youngsters, it's so...
Very positive enforcement, a really good relationship between the youth and the police department, and it's a non-threatening way and, and it helps to get our, our point across in crime prevention.
And which is good. It's gonna be an island-wide thing, so, you know, any district, any, um, I guess, off our stations can use this.
Yeah, we just recently promoted a lot of new officers into the community police and school resource vacancies, and they were all recent, uh, well, fourteen new officers were trained, certified to use the costume. So now we have an increase of people that are capable of using it, so we need to, you know, the second costume will definitely increase our ability.
So I just asked for support. Thank you.
Mr. Onishi, will you be making a special appearance in a costume too? I think that'd be a great idea.
I didn't get the training.
We can look into that.
No, we don't wanna pay for it. No, no. Okay, any other discussion? If not, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, on the vote.
Ms. Yehaw.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegan.
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Onishi.
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Chair Shimono.
Aye.
Chair Shimono, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Resolution 191-13 is approved. Let's move... Yes, Mr. Onishi.
We have one more for police.
Oh, you do?
Which was 189... 189-13.
Okay, is that, uh, Mr. Hore, is he here?
Yes.
He's here for that too?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, one page back, on page number four, Mr. Clerk, resolution 189-13.
Resolution 189-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account for speed enforcement. Transfers appropriates $3,000 out of the clerk, out from the clerk council services contingency relief credits $2,000 to the police department, South Hilo Police, salaries and wages, 021, overtime salaries and wages, speed enforcement District Three, and credits $1,000 to the police department, Punah Police, salaries and wages, 021, overtime salary and wages, speed enforcement District Three, for a total of $3,000. Contingency relief funds from District Three will be used for speed enforcement in District Three. Reference communication 465, introduced by Mr. Onishi, waived FC.
Mr. Onishi.
Move to approve resolution 189-13.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion, Mr. Onishi?
Uh, well, this is gonna help with the overtime for South Telo and also parts of Punah. So I ask for support.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, any... Mr. Illegan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna thank council member Onishi for adding this for the Punah Police Department's salary and wages, and, um, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Yehaw.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegan.
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Onishi.
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Chair Shimono.
Aye.
Chair Shimono, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Resolution 189-13 is approved. We're gonna move to page six, top, uh, resolution 196-13.
Resolution 196-13 authorized the acceptance of a monetary donation of $25 to the Hawaii Fire Department, donated by Robert and Patrice Tomaso. Monetary donation to be used by the Hawaii Fire Department's Discovery Harbor Volunteer Fire Company in honor of Robert and Patrice Tomaso's late nephew, Joe Maven. Reference communication 476, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, waived FC.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve 196-13.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Ms. Point Dexter, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask, um, the Fire Department if you could just introduce yourself. Yeah, I'd just like to ask the Fire Department if you could just introduce yourself, and then, there's a story behind the $25, and I'd like for you to kind of share that story.
Hi, I am Battalion Chief Gerald Kosaki. Thank you, Chair Yoshimoto and council members. Yes, this is a $25, which may seem a little bit, but there is a story, and, you know, this is the captain of the Discovery Harbor Volunteer Fire Department, a fire station, Terry James, and the letter was written to him from someone in New York, so I'll have him explain.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Approximately two months ago, I received a letter addressed to the Discovery Harbor Volunteer Fire Department, care of me. It was from Patrice Tomaso in upstate New York, and unfortunately, her letter indicated that within a very short period of time, her family had suffered the loss of two individuals, the last of which was their nephew, Joseph Maiden, I believe. And Joseph was a volunteer fire department in upstate, or a member of the volunteer fire department in upstate New York. Needless to say that the loss of these two individuals deeply impacted Mr. and Mrs. Tomaso. And part of their healing process was going to be the donation of $25 per month to a volunteer fire department in each of the 50 states, and she started with Hawaii. I do not know exactly how I came to receive this letter, but it haunted me. Their letter was full of emotion, pain, and anguish, and I just couldn't let it go until I pinned a response that evening. I don't know if any of you have seen the letter, but it's really quite a work of art. Anyway, I am, I would be very pleased, as part of the Discovery Harbor Volunteer Fire Department, to accept this gift, which is as much a gesture as anything, and to be part of their healing process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just needed to share that story, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Eoff.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegan.
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Onishi.
Aye.
Ms. Poindexter.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Resolution 196-13 is approved. Next item is 197-13.
Resolution 197-13 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account for wildland firefighting boots for the volunteer firefighters in District 1. Transfers appropriates $4,200 out and from clerk council services contingency relief, credits same to Fire Department Training and Volunteer Fire, other current expenses 231, public safety supplies, wildland firefighting boots for District 1 volunteer firefighters. Contingency relief funds from District 1 will be used to purchase 21 pairs of wildland firefighting boots for the District 1 volunteer firefighters. Reference communication 477, introduced by Ms. Poindexter, waived FC.
Ms. Poindexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 197-13.
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion, Ms. Poindexter?
I just wanna say thank you to the, I have a lot of volunteer firefighters in, in my district, and I've attended several of your meetings, and I know they always talk about, when are we gonna get our boots? When are we getting our boots? And I know a lot of the other council members will be coming forward to, I'm sure, I don't wanna speak on their behalf right now, but I just wanna say thank you for all you do, and if you just wanna state your name for the record and say a few words on behalf of the volunteer firefighters.
Well, thank you very much. I, of course, represent a very small portion of the volunteer division.
Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Terry James.
Thank you.
I'm the commanding officer for Volunteer Company 11 Charlie in Discovery Harbor, and we certainly appreciate the tremendous support we receive from, from the Hawaii Fire Department and from the council, from the county in general. It is, if I may go so far, and I don't wanna go too far here, but if I may go so far as, as to say that we are volunteers, it's a non-compensated position, and there are some, we do go to some expense on our, on a personal level. Any assistance we can get to reduce those personal expenses is greatly appreciated. With respect to the boots, I understand that there are programs in the design for that. In the past, we have essentially been responsible for the purchase of, of these boots on our own, and it's a significant expense, particularly for somebody who's not compensated, so it's, any, any assistance is certainly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, go ahead.
Can I just say a few words? Battalion Chief Gerald Kosaki, I oversee the Training Division, of which the volunteers are part of. Anyway, I'd like to just say that we're the only department in the state that is a combination department that has volunteer firefighters as well as paid firefighters, and the fire, the volunteer firefighters are an integral part of our department, and they assist us with almost every fire call that we have, any hazardous condition call, and they're always there, fighting and working very hard, basically on volunteer time on their own. And like Captain James has said, this is just a small thing, I mean, just a small part, by getting, you know, some boots and getting equipment for them, just to help them ease their expenses that they would do on their own. But again, I'd like to thank Terry and all the volunteers throughout the island.
Yeah, thank you. Because we just recently, several months ago, had that big fire in Paul Willow, the house fire, and we had our volunteer firefighters there, and if it wasn't for them, they were holding a hose to this huge propane tank that the fire was just blazing right next to, and they just kept holding that hose because they didn't want it to blow up, because the other houses were so close, so thank you so much, the volunteer firefighters and the firefighters. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful donation, and I've already, mine is in process, it'll be up the next council meeting from now. Of course, I serve Discovery Harbors in my district. I think I've got six or seven volunteer stations in my district of South Kona Kaua and Volcano, and you guys do a tremendous job, and I have huge open areas, basically, it's all wild land out in my, my area. I remember one Christmas when we had three simultaneous fires, two on the ranches and one in Peru, over in South Kona, near the Captain Cook area, and I'm not kidding, for three weeks, none of us couldn't breathe. It was just a nightmare, and we wouldn't have gotten out of that situation without the combined efforts of our fire department and our volunteer firefighters. So, I'm more than happy to help with this by voting for it, and my, my portion of this is going to be coming, so thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford. Any other discussion, council members? Hearing received, none. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, the vote on Resolution 197.
Ms. Eoff.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Illegan.
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha.
Aye.
Mr. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Onishi.
Aye.
Ms. Poindexter.
Aye.
Ms. Willie.
Aye.
Ms. Shimoda.
Aye.
Ms. Shimoda have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Resolution 197-13 is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we have a request, again, to take Bill 135 out of order and then Bills 119 and 120, so why don't we start with Bill 135?
Bill 135 amends Chapter 14 of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 edition as amended by adding a new article relating to the distribution of tobacco products. Makes it unlawful for any person to distribute a tobacco product to any person under 21 years of age, to take effect on July 1, 2014. Those persons at least 18 years old on or before July 1, 2014, would be exempt from this law. Reference communication 447, introduced by Mr. Kanuha, approved, PSMTC-17.
Mr. Kanuha.
I move to approve Bill 135.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Eoff. Go ahead, Mr. Kanuha.
First, I wanna, first of all, acknowledge all the students and all the testifiers who are here this morning, and those who left that couldn't be here for the, for the reading of this bill, but I wanted to thank, and thank you for offering sincere, personal testimonies, and for sharing your views on this important matter that affects you personally. Thank you also to those students who are here simply just to support their, their classmates. Big mahalo again to Ms. Sally Ancheta and the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Hawaii for, for all the outreach work that, that you guys have done to rally support for this important bill. I wanna reiterate that the intent of this legislation is not to outlaw the possession of tobacco products, but simply make retailers responsible for its distribution. It is not intended to criminalize young people if they're caught smoking, but rather attempts to reduce or at least delay the introduction of tobacco to them. It is not meant to infringe on anyone's rights or freedoms, but it is meant to protect our youth from the harmful effects and health risks, health risks associated with smoking. I did want to mention that one of the largest cities in our nation, New York City, recently passed, recently passed a law to increase the sale, sale age of tobacco to 21 years of age, so I wanted everybody to understand that, the public to let, to let the public know that this is just, this important matter reached all the way to New York City. As a matter of fact, several cities are also looking at us right now to see if we can also be a model to the rest of the nation. My commitment is to help our young people live longer, healthier lives. I urge my fellow council members to please support this bill. Let us prevent or at least delay our young people from taking up a habit that remains a leading cause of preventable deaths nationwide. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Kanuha. Mr. Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I absolutely support this bill. I think it's great. I love the way it's structured too, where it doesn't criminalize young folks, you know, everybody goes through the processes and makes mistakes along the way, and it does make the, the retailers responsible for that. I think that's, I think it's great. I really like that a lot. So, I absolutely support this bill. To me, it is a no-brainer, and it's great to see the, the youth coming out, the teachers, people in the community coming out, being active. I also appreciate it when people that, that do smoke come out and they support this too, because it's, it's just important. I mean, it's such an important issue, and it's such a heavy, heavy addiction for folks, so I support this and thank you to everybody, and thank you, Mr. Kanuha, and you got my support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kern. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I have to admit that I've been somewhat torn on this bill, because in our country, the age of majority is 18, and I really appreciate the lovely lady who came up and spoke about her husband, and the difference between going to war to protect your country and being addicted to something, and there is a huge difference. And I've talked to a few people in my circle, asking them what they thought about the bill, and unanimously, it was, we need to rage, raise the age of consent on tobacco-smoking purchases. I wish this bill just stopped it dead at 21 and didn't have this three-year window, I really do, but it's the first step in the right direction, and so I'm, this is one where I just grit my teeth and vote and say, all right, we'll get through this, you know, we'll get through the three-year period of time, and then it'll be good for everyone. I wanna talk about some, I think I've talked about this before, maybe even at the last meeting. I'm of an age, or I grew up in the 60s, and there's some of us on the, on the council who are in that same age group. I won't mention any names, so, but I remember when Congress, the US Congress, called the tobacco CEOs up to testify in front of them, lined them up, I don't know if there was 10 or 13 or whatever the number was, it was horrible, and every one of them raised their hand and swore an oath that they were telling the truth, that there was nothing harmful about tobacco, there was, it was perfectly healthy, you know, sounds like some of the testimony we've been hearing on other issues, which I won't go into. And then, I don't remember if it was within months or years, you know, in my age, your memory sometimes gets a little fuzzy, but I remember shortly thereafter, it came out that the tobacco companies were not only putting tobacco in their products, they were lacing the tobacco with other drugs to make the nicotine even more addictive, and they are still targeting young people. You don't see commercials of old people like me smoking, it's always the young cute models and, you know, and they're always having a big party, and it's just wonderful. Now, I know a lot of that is not on television anymore, thank goodness, but that's who they're targeting, because the young people are still susceptible to peer pressure and all these other things that hopefully, some of us older people have gotten past. So, when you look at things like they're lacing the tobacco with additional addictive things, and here we are, losing 400,000 people a year to tobacco-caused diseases. I lost my brother-in-law to lung cancer, it was a very ugly death, I won't go into the details, ugly death. And then I look at something like this with young people themselves are standing up and saying, it's gotta stop. I can't tell you how brave all of you are, especially the people who used to be smokers to come forward and say, I've smoked, I was addicted, it's a terrible thing to try to get unhooked from this particular drug. One of our friends quit cold turkey, drinking alcohol and smoking, and said it was much harder to stop smoking than it was to give up alcohol. It's that addictive, it's that addictive. I commend all of you for what you're doing. Mr. Kanuha, you did a good job on this, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Willie.
Hi. I'd like to call forward the woman who spoke about her husband and ask, and let me say, I do very much support this, along with Brenda, I could do without all these three-year step things, but I, a person that believes in taking steps in the right direction, and, but let me just say, there are quite a few people in my district, and I think there was something in even the newspaper, just sort of in terms of at what point we treat people as an adult and what point we treat them as a child in terms of their, making their own judgment. Now, was your husband, was he between ages 18 and 21 when you were talking about his choice?
Yes, when he joined the military, he was 20 years old. He, his brother was 18, they went into the Marines together.
And, so my, my concern is really not so much with that we should have the restriction on tobacco, but really whether we ought to tell the Congress we should change and not have military service until after age 21, so that's how I sort of look at it, is that they really, it's saying you don't have the, at what age do you have an adult judgment, that your mind's clearly working, that you should take responsibility and be accountable for your decisions, and I think we, I would, I feel those two should be aligned in terms of that you treat persons, people as an adult or as a child, and if we're gonna say, no, tobacco, you can't make your own choice about tobacco at 21, I would like to say you can't make your choice to go off and be killed for our nation until you're age 21, and maybe we'd have fewer wars, but that's another subject, anyway. I do, did, what I wanted to ask you though is, would you be in favor of something that said that no smoking in public places? I mean, right now, you know, it's like 20 feet away.
Ms. Willie, I think we're getting beyond the scope. Let's not get into that, because you're gonna open a whole different issue, so let's stay to the main issue.
But I'm not gonna have her here, are these people here to ask?
Well, you can talk to her anytime. Well, you can talk to her anytime offline.
And for the record, my name is Sally Ancheta and I'm the East Hawaii Coalition Coordinator and I am very accessible. I live right here in Hilo. So we can definitely have more discussions.
So you understand where, what I'm going. And I, I, the other thing is I just want to encourage this type, you all and students, I think you did an exceptional job testifying today. And I, I know I actually went to school with the person who wrote the first provision into regulation, was in school and did it as a school project. And that's how those little symbols got onto the tobacco packages, as a school project. So anyway, thank you very much and please don't let this be the only issue that you come in here and talk to us and think about what we should be doing. And thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Eoff.
Thank you. And thank you, and thank you to the Coalition and thank you, Councilmember Canuha. I too will support this bill and I think it's really clear, as Mr. Canuha stated, that the bill does not tell anybody that they're, they cannot smoke. It just tells the establishments and the retailers that they cannot sell tobacco to somebody under age 21. So it's very clear we're not really taking away anybody's rights that they have at this time. So, Yof, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eoff. Mr. Ilagun.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just want to commend you for stepping up and testifying. That's awesome. I'd love to see that. I do want to share a story and, Mr. Chair, if I could direct it to Councilmember Willie, if that's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to share this story because I, I myself went to the Air National Guard and I enlisted in the military when I was 18. Now, I'm sharing this so you can have an understanding on how this law would impact the military. When I went to basic training, there was no thinking of smoking. You just don't have that choice or privilege. Then I went to tech school. That's when, regardless of the law here, your tech school is going to be there in Mississippi, in Georgia, all around other states. It's not going to be in Hawaii County. And the only time you're actually stationed in Hawaii County is if you're in the Air National Guard and you come back. So when I came back, I was around 19 and 20. And what this law does is prohibits the businesses from selling. And how I was influenced with any cigarettes, we're dealing with fellow friends who has a pack. And they give you a cigarette because you're out doing the things at night that you shouldn't be doing, just like, you know. And if you are influenced, you, you take a puff and then you start smoking. However, with this, you can't go out and buy a pack. So it stops you there. It has to be a person repeatedly giving you something for you to continue that habit. So this doesn't stop the kid who steals from their parents. It doesn't stop their friend from buying a cigarette. But it does stop you to where, when you do take a puff and you're like, you know, it wasn't a good experience, but let me try that. And then it stops you there because you can't buy on your own. So until you're 21 and within that time, you're like, you know, since I didn't really do it, I might as well not. So that's where it helps. And that's what I see it helping the youth. And I just wanted to share you, share with you that story. And I just want to also thank Councilmember Canuha for putting up this legislation and also the Coalition. Aloha.
Thank you, Mr. Ilagun. Ms. Onishi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, to my understanding was when we had the discussion in Kona was that this, what we're doing with this ordinance is to help prevent the people at the ages 18 to 21 buying cigarettes for the younger ages. Correct? Was that, was that the discussion? Sally, you can come up forward. Because I thought that was like a study or something that the 18 to 21-year-olds are providing cigarettes or purchasing?
Right. Youth have reported, self-reported in the Youth Hawaii Tobacco Survey. The latest data I had was from 2011, that over 25% were able to get their cigarettes from others who purchased for them. So that would be one of the cabots of the benefits of this law, is that we wouldn't have 18-year-olds on campus that had, were able to buy for their classmates. We don't see very many 21-year-old high school students. So that's, that's a blessing, that they're not there on a day-to-day basis, being able to hang out with their friends.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I just want to kind of clarify what, why this thing is happening. But then also, I don't know if any of the councilmembers went out and talked to any store owners. And I did go and talk to a couple of them. And they told me that because of the price of cigarettes, sales went down too. So to me, an option, because, well, and they, they mentioned that cigarettes are so high, people cannot afford purchasing cigarettes. So that's why they seen a drop in sales. So an option is too would be to have the state legislature to increase that tobacco tax, right? And then could put it way out into this, you know, higher, you know, pricing where this could help prevent people from smoking. But that's an option. But I just want to kind of clarify on that part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Onishi. Ms. Willy.
I just want to make, if, give me a little latitude, just respond to Councilmember.
Sure. As long as, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be short. Okay.
Really? No. Ms. Ford's reminding you to stay on topic. Go ahead, Ms. Wood.
You know, I feel we'll, unduly narrowly restrict subjects. Okay, and, but I will be quick. What we're talking about here is deterring smoking during that period when you're most vulnerable. And I started smoking from being around other people with me in that same way in public places or at school. And, and so that's why I'm getting at the, raising that parallel issue of if this is important, and I find most people are out there smoking together in little huddles and getting it. So that's why I'm encouraging that related issue of smoking in public. And I just want to raise it. I don't have all the answers, but that's why I bring it up in this context.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Eoff.
Hi.
Ms. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Ilagun.
Hi.
Mr. Canuha.
Hi.
Mr. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Onishi.
Hi.
Ms. Poindexter.
Hi.
Ms. Willy.
Hi.
Cher Shimura.
Hi.
Cher Shimura, you have nine eyes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Bill 135 passes on first reading. Thank you. Okay, let's see. We had a request to take 119 and 120 out of order. So, Mr. Clerk, if you can read in Bill 119.
Bill 119 amends the state land use boundaries map for the county of Hawaii by changing the district classification from agricultural to the urban district at Keone Foko Iki Puna Hawaii Tax Map Key 1-5-007-006-069 and 070. Applicant DT Kuahara LLC, approximately 9.93 acres. The applicant requests a change of district classification to develop a commercial center consisting of approximately 104,326 square feet of leasable space. Reference Communication 409 introduced by Mr. Kern by request, approved PC 46, postponed October 16, 2013. Note, there is a pending motion by Mr. Yoshimura and duly seconded by Mr. Canuha to approve, to approve Bill 119.
Okay, so it's live on, Bill 119 is live on the floor. Mr. Kern, did you want to start the discussion or what's your pleasure?
I would, if the applicant or representative have anything to add to that, that's fine. When we do get to 120, there's two amendments that we'll have discussion on.
Okay.
But I don't really have anything to talk about 119.
Okay, any other discussion on Bill 119, council members? If not, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Eoff.
Hi.
Ms. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Ilagun.
Hi.
Mr. Canuha.
Hi.
Mr. Kern.
Hi.
Ms. Onishi.
Hi.
Ms. Poindexter.
Hi.
Ms. Willy.
Hi.
Cher Shimura.
Hi.
Cher Shimura, you have nine eyes.
Thank you. Bill 119 passes on first reading. Bill 120?
Bill 120 amends Section 25-8-26 Pahoa Zone Map, Article 8, Chapter 25, Zoning Code of the Hawaii County Code 1983-2005 edition by changing the district classification from agricultural, 1 acre A-1A, to village commercial, 10,000 square feet CV-10 at Keone Foko Iki Puna Hawaii, covered by Tax Map Key 1-5-007-006-069 and 070. Applicant DT Kuahara LLC, approximately 9.93 acres. The applicant requests a change in zone to develop a commercial center consisting of approximately 104,326 square feet of leasable space. Reference Communication 409 introduced by Mr. Kern by request, approved PC 47, postponed October 16, 2013. Note, there is a pending motion by Mr. Yoshimura and duly seconded by Mr. Canuha to approve Bill 120. And Communication 409-3.3 from Council Vice Chair Karen Eoff dated October 1, 2013, transmitting a proposed amendment to Bill 120 whereby a certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until the intersection improvement project at the Pahoa Bypass Highway 130-Pahoa Village Road intersection has been completed by the Department of Transportation. And Communication 409.6 from Councilmember Zendo Kern dated October 30, 2013, transmitting a proposed amendment to Bill 120 whereby a certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until a traffic, traffic signal, crosswalks and turning lanes at the Kahakai Boulevard-Pahoa Village Road intersection has been installed by the applicant.
Okay, so Bill 120 is live on the floor. Mr. Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Eoff, would you like to do your amendment first?
Okay.
Then I'll yield to Ms. Eoff and then come back to me.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Eoff.
Thank you. As was discussed at the last meeting, I brought forward this amendment. It's Communication 409.3. So at this time, I'd like to move to amend Bill 120 with the contents of Communication 409.3.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Okay, Ms. Eoff, you have the floor.
Thank you. I've watched land use for a while now in Hawaii and with the introduction of all of the community development plans, not only for Puna but in Kona as well, I'm, I'm really interested in seeing how we can implement the philosophy of concurrency and keeping up with infrastructure and making sure that as we do development and increase traffic, that we don't further increase safety issues. I think this amendment is much stronger by requiring that occupancy shall not be issued for the proposed development until, until construction of the intersection improvements have been completed, rather than just how it was stated previously where funding would have been released prior to occupancy. So that's the change. Last, last meeting, we had pretty much of a consensus from the community and the applicants that this would be, and attorneys for planning, that this would be the proper language as stated for the new condition N to read as amended. So I would urge my council members to support this. And unless the applicant has anything to add, that's all I had to say.
Okay. Ms. Eoff, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Onishi, followed by Ms. Ford.
I would like to have planning and the developer to come up. You folks can introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Members of the Council. I'm Dwayne Canuha, Planning Director.
Good morning. John McEltean.
My question first going to be to planning is that, okay, my understanding is the conditions that was already put upon to the developer, are you, is Planning Department okay with that?
The original condition?
Correct.
Well, that's why they imposed it on the.
You know, and so, so, okay, so now by having this amended version to this, I mean, how, how does the Planning Department feel like, I mean, is it gonna, I mean, you guys could be still happy with what you folks originally had? Or you folks would rather see this being put in?
Well, the, the reason we proposed that condition the way we did was that the, the construction of the roundabout or construction of any kind of public improvement, realistically, it's, you know, never on time. It's either, it's never too fast, let's put it this way. You know, it's always, it just never gets there in time. And that was the, the reason for that particular condition. However, since then, the developers indicated that, you know, they're okay with the amendment, you know, so we're fine with that. Our, our concern from the private party standpoint, or even our standpoint, is to be conditioned upon actions that are beyond your control. You know, kind of makes it difficult. But in this particular case, the developer, you know, seems to have no issue with that. So we don't have a problem with it either.
Okay. And why, Councilmembers, I'm asking this question because I wasn't here at the discussion when you folks did this. And so I was kind of surprised that this was talked about and then hearing that the developer was okay with this. So now, maybe you can say something.
The reason originally that I was okay with it, because it just makes sense that you want to have all the roadways complete and safe and ready to go for a new development. It doesn't make sense to have the signal light in and the roundabout not in and everything would be kind of dysfunctional. So in a perfect world, it would be better to have the roundabout completed before occupancy is granted. But I was concerned about it because there could be an act of God. There could be, certain things could happen that the roundabout wouldn't be completed. I called the DOT in Honolulu and I spoke with the project manager, Steve Yoshida. I've actually spoken to him twice now. He told me that the. He told me that the project number one has been funded. And I asked him, is that mean design has been funded or does that mean design and construction has been funded? He said that design and construction from the governor's office has been funded. Okay, that's number one. That's a good sign. He also told me that they're going to go publish for contractors in January. That's how close they are with their design completed. So if they do that, that's 120 days it'll take to select the contractor and probably another two months to.
John, okay, I got to interrupt you on this. Okay, so, so what you're saying is you folks are okay with this amendment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because my, or my, hearing from you folks too, you have another problem with the power lines.
Yes, yes.
And that could delay your project further.
Yes, because what I promised all along was that we would coordinate with the DOT in our project so that the detour is completely clear when the detour begins. The reason for the, the next amendment is because supposing, let's say suppose that.
Point, point of order, just, we're not on that amendment yet, so just.
Oh, okay, okay.
We can, we'll have a chance.
But you can kind of.
It's kind of tied in.
On your, on your theory.
Yeah. Yeah, because if, if the roundabout starts before we do, then we would have, we wouldn't be able to put the signal light in until they were through work. wouldn't be able to put the signal light in until they were through working. The DOT would have to be completely finished.
No, no, I wanted to see the power light, that the one...
That's what I'm talking about. The HELOC requires to get the signal light in, that we have to move four utility poles, and we're only moving them five feet, and they are on the county roadway right away. But we couldn't move those and put the signal light in if the DOT had already started construction.
Okay, well, the one from the geothermal, the one that high-power?
Yes, yes. So let's finish up with the amendment and we can get back to the...
Yeah, yeah.
No, but, okay, so, no, but so my question was that because they have other roadblocks, and so I was thinking that, you know...
Yeah, the worst-case scenario would be we would have to wait until the DOT completed the roundabout before we could put the signal light.
But you guys are okay with this amendment then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
Thank you. Um, yep, we're on the amendment, Karen's amendment. Now, on her amendment, she talks about the Pahoa bypass, which is Highway one thirty, and the Pahoa Village Road. So I've got your map. And according to the map, the names are just a little bit different and I'm not, I want to make sure. This particular road here is the Ka'ao Pahoa Bypass Highway one thirty road. This one, which is labeled as the old Pahoa...
Village Road.
Village Road is what she's calling Pahoa Village Road.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure. So the intersection we're talking about with this roundabout, this lavender area up here, okay? I just want to make sure because the names are all just a slight big difference and I'm not as familiar with that areas as the people who live over there. That's all I have. Thank you, I yield.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Iligan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I'm reading the amendment, I've noticed the main difference with the amendment, you already have verbalized it. What it is, is that before, technically, since you just talked to the Department of Transportation, they already funded the project. So technically, met that provision. Now, we're amending the provision to where once the roundabout is completed, then we can issue your occupancy certification. So that's the main difference. And as you have already agreed upon, that you support this, I just hope everything goes right with the Department of Transportation and everything will be a perfect world scenario and we can get that going and there won't be any problems. So as you supported it, I understand where you're going with. I'd rather have all the pathways fully secured and fully drivable and hopefully increasing the safety of the people in Puna. So I'm gonna support this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Iligan. So we're still on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Ms. Eoff?
Just before closing, I just wanted to thank, thank you for being able to think creatively and futuristically and, you know, helping us to make sure that we can do our job to provide the proper infrastructure at the right times. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eoff. Okay, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Ms. Eoff?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligan?
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Onishi?
Aye.
Ms. Poindexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Eight ayes and one no.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So Bill one twenty is amended with Communication four oh nine point three. Mr. Kern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I move to amend Bill one twenty with the contents of Communication four oh nine point six.
Seconded by Ms. Ford. Mr. Kern, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, yeah. Um, the developer had contacted our office and then there were some concerns that were coming up. And so after having this conversation with them, we made this amendment. Now, I'd like to, Mr. McElveyn, if you would, to kind of give us the story, give us the background of why this came up and how this will help the project.
Could you, could you like, you like?
The, uh, the way it was worded previously, it said that we would not be able to get any building permits on the project until the signal light was in. Now, that made sense at first, but then if you take the other scenario where the roundabout gets constructed first, then we would be stuck, unable to put the signal light in. Even though we have preliminary plans and everything, we would have to stop and do nothing while the roundabout is completed. This way, if that happens, we can perhaps pull some building permits on site and be working off the roadways on site and be getting things done until such time as we can get back out on the roadway and put the signal light in. So that's the reason for that.
Thank you, Mr. McElveyn. Yeah, and the conversation in my background with construction and whatnot, this makes sense to me and I didn't have any problem with it. It still, it doesn't, it allows them to be, to work, be able to build things on the site without having that in there. But the main, the main thing is, is that all the necessary infrastructure, the signal light, crosswalks, everything has to be in place before they get occupancy. That's the big one. That's when traffic starts. That's when the big, the big impact comes in. And I don't think there'd be any reason to make it more potentially humbug with the way it was previously, and they're sitting over there with their hands tied and can't get, can't even start building, which we know building means jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, this is, it makes sense and it still has the safeguards that the community, and everybody's concerned about infrastructure in place with smart development. So I think this makes sense and I hope my fellow council members support this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kern. Ms. Ford?
Again, I'm gonna pull up your map. So now we're talking about a different intersection. Talking about this blue one because again, it says Pahoa Village Road, which on your map says Old Pahoa Village Road. I just want to make sure it's all the same thing. Okay, I support this. Mr. Kanuha, though, I want to ask you a question. And the reason I'm asking the question because, Mr. McElveyn, you sent a little letter. It's Communication four oh nine point seven. It's not an amendment, it's just a communication. And you said prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, you really, it really means a certificate of occupancy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that I hadn't missed something in the translations here. Okay, I support this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Eoff?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligan?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Onishi?
Aye.
Ms. Poindexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Aye.
Ms. Yoshimura, nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So Bill one twenty is further amended with Communication four oh nine point six. We're back to the main motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Ms. Clerk.
I just want to say that I absolutely support this project. Pahoa needs it. The population that's grown around there is massive. It's, it really is. Um, it's between Hawaiian Beaches, Nanavali, Leilani. I mean, it's just, there's so much, there's so much demand and with the highway construction going in on one thirty, it just, it just makes sense. It's part of the CDP process. It's trying to get that density in the core urban areas. Pahoa does make sense for that. Also, I think it's great that we have a developer here that's really working with the community, with the council, to say, yeah, we agree. Infrastructure and the project, it all needs to work together, it needs to make sense. So I just, I appreciate that. So I absolutely support this project. The area needs it and I hope my fellow council members support the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kern. Any further discussion, council members? Mr. Iligan?
Lido.
Okay, thank you for the brevity. Okay, any other discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk, we're on Bill one twenty as amended.
Ms. Eoff?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Ms. Iligan?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Onishi?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Aye.
Ms. Yoshimura, nine ayes.
Thank you, Bill one twenty as amended, moves forward from first reading to second reading. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, council members, do we need a break or are we okay to just go to twelve noon?
I just want to thank all of you because I know how hard your work is, especially after last night.
Right.
So I appreciate your, especially your attention to detail.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if everyone heard that, Ms. Ford, you could repeat it if you... No, 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 I don't want you to repeat. Okay. Okay. So council members, do we need a break or are we gonna push through to twelve noon? That's the pleasure. We're good? Okay. Okay, so why don't we start then at the top of the...
Mr. Chair, we have Mr. Kato here and then we also have Mr. Yara from the university here too, so why don't we get those out?
Okay, let's see. Um, who was, who was here first?
Kato was here first.
Okay, Mr. Kato, since you were here first, why don't you come on forward? So, Mr. Onishi, which, um, let's see, that's two oh six dash thirteen? I'm trying to find it here. Yes, that's the one that I... Okay. Resolution two oh six dash thirteen, Mr. Clerk, at the end of resolutions?
Resolution two oh six dash thirteen authorizes the mayor to provide easements, licenses, permits, or other authorization reasonably necessary for the leases of Lot three A, tax map key number three, two, dash four, dash zero zero one, dash one, seven, dash one seven seven, and Lot three B, tax map key number three, two, dash four, dash zero zero one, dash one eight four. Muhuli Senior Housing Phase One LLP is completing the construction of sixty affordable rental units for senior citizens on Lot three A. Hawaii Island Community Development Corporation will continue to plan, develop, and operate later phases of affordable rental housing for seniors, senior citizens in Lot three B. Reference Communication four nine six, introduced by Mr. Yoshimura, waived FC.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolution two oh six dash thirteen?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Kern, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Mr. Kato, you're here to speak on this, yes?
Yes.
Okay, if you could introduce yourself and just basically explain to the council the rationale behind the resolution.
My name is Keith Kato, Executive Director of Hawaii Island Community Development Corporation. Our entity is the general partner in the partnership. Actually, it might help if I pass something out, but...
Sure.
Give you a better picture of what's going on.
You give it to the clerk and we can... Well, while Mr. Kato's passing that out, is there anyone else here to speak on this resolution that can help, whether it's... No, okay.
Okay, just by way of background, when we started this project back in two thousand and eight, there was initial resolution by the county council that authorized the mayor to lease the project or the property to us. It had, you know, general language in there that said that the mayor's authorized to execute the lease as well as any other documents needed for financing. And so I guess erroneously, we assumed that this also gave the mayor the right to sign easement documents. Easements are, you know, necessary because we have subdivided the property and, you know, the access is really limited to only one spot, which is off of Muhuli Street. And so, and easement needed to be, needs to be provided. If you look at, you know, this picture here, you know, this is the, the big yellow line here is the access easement for the adjacent parcel, and it also contains the water line that we're installing. Actually, maybe it might help to look at this, the second page, which is shows the overall property. The area that you see all of the diagrams here, you know, this is where we're developing the senior housing right now. So there's, you know, need to provide access to this lower parcel. And the access is gonna come through this easement here. Also, the water line will continue to run down, so we're gonna service the project that away. So we then discovered though that the resolution that was originally passed by the county council did not authorize the mayor to execute easements, you know, which is necessary in order for the project to proceed. So that's why we've asked for this, you know, resolution to be introduced.
Okay, so basically, it's really simple. It just, you just need to have this resolution passed so the mayor can sign off on the easements that's required for the project.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's really straightforward, Mr. Onishi.
And will this help with this easement with the Hilo adult care center?
Uh, yeah, actually, the next project that we're probably are gonna end up doing is in this location right here. It's the, we're trying to construct a new facility for the Hilo adult care center. They're gonna need to use this easement and we're probably gonna need to extend the easement further.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Willie, you have a question on the...
Yeah, I just, I couldn't really see where you...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where's the expansion next? Is it in this tree area here on this map?
Actually, it's kind of difficult to see. If anything, it's right in this corner here.
Oh, it's, okay, it's not, it's moving in this direction, not over in that.
Right. It's moving down the hill, essentially.
Okay, and the hill goes like this?
Um, it goes the other way, actually. So, well...
That's what I was trying to look, okay, I see. Okay.
Yeah, so, Ms. Willie, we're on...
Okay, I just wanted to get...
No, I think she's asking a good question, I'm sorry. All right?
Okay.
This is Komahana, this is the uphill portion.
Yeah, it's, where these trees are on here?
Like what?
The property is located Mauna of Komahana.
Got it. Okay, that's why it's uphill this way.
That's right.
All right, got it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move on, Ms. Willie. You can talk to Mr. Onishi offline and then we can move forward. Okay, any other discussion, council members? It's really straightforward, just off, this was, this should have been done in two thousand and eight, basically, right? In the original, and whatever didn't happen, didn't happen, but we're trying to fix that. Mr. Kato, correct? So it's not any more complicated than that. So, Ms. Ford, go ahead.
Thank you. The reason I'm having a question in my mind is there is no background information from the original documentation.
Ayes.
And honestly, I can't remember how I voted on this, you know, that far back. So if this is just for easements though, whether I voted for it or I didn't vote for it, I suspect that I did. If it's only for easements so that, you know, then I can live with this. But what, can you refresh my memory? Was there any issue, specifically, I'm thinking about flooding issues? There's something crawling up the back of my brain about flooding in here, and I forget what it is.
The...
I know it's a little bit off, I'm gonna vote for this, I just want to make sure...
Well, yeah, I don't want to...
I just want to make sure that this isn't something that I got hysterical about in two thousand and eight. I don't think it was.
I don't recall any.
Well, I'm sure your memory is just perfect.
Well, brother, you get a circle of doubt.
No, was it just yes or no? Was there any flooding issues you had to deal with?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Mr. Clerk, the vote.
Ms. Eoff?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Ms. Iligan?
Aye.
Mr. Kanuha?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Onishi?
Aye.
Ms. Poindexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Aye.
Ms. Yoshimura, nine ayes.
Thank you, Resolution two oh six dash thirteen is approved. Thank you, Mr. Kato.
Thank you.
So we are next on, looks like, Bill one twenty-two, is that correct?
Yes.
One twenty-two, Mr. Clerk, on second reading.
Bill one two two, Planning Director initiated amend section one, amend section twenty-five dash eight dash three three, City of Hilo Zone Map, Article eight, Chapter twenty-five, zoning code of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and five edition, by changing the district classification from agricultural one acre A one A to single-family residential ten thousand square feet RS-ten to university, U N V. And the deletion of the proposed eighty-foot right-of-way connecting Komahana Street and Kubokoahua Street at Waikia South Hilo, Hawaii, covered by tax map keys two dash four dash zero zero one, zero zero five, portion of zero zero seven, zero four one, one six two, one six three, one six seven, and two dash four dash zero five six, zero one seven. The Winward Planning Commission forwards a favorable recommendation to the council regarding the Planning Director's request for a change of zone for approximately three hundred twelve acres of land that currently accommodates the main campus of the University of Hawaii at Hilo, its University Park of Science and Technology Complex, as well as immediately surrounding lands under the management of the University of Hawaii. Reference Communication four one one, introduced by Mr. Kern by request, first reading October sixteen, twenty thirteen.
Mr. Kern?
Um, I don't, I don't have anything to say on it. I support the project if the applicant has anything to say.
Okay.
That's fine.
Mr. Onishi, followed by Ms. Ford.
Can I have Planning come back up, or come on, please? You can introduce yourself.
Good morning again, members of the council, I'm Dwayne Kanuha, Planning Director.
Thank you, Mr. Director. I just, I guess, hearing testimony, can you explain about why Planning is in support of taking out that eighty-five-foot easement, roadway easement?
The, um, well, first of all, if you look at, you know, the plan for the area, you know, that roadway, in our opinion, you know, would be redundant because they would connect straight up to Komahana, and actually go across Komahana and hook up someplace in Sunrise Ridge. Just a short, you know, basically, right now, you have a stoplight at the top of, at Komahana and where the university complex goes there. And then your next stoplight is at Mahouli and Komahana. Well, this roadway would bisect those, there'd be another intersection, another stoplight within that, that short stretch of road, one. Functionally, we thought it, you know, was kind of redundant in terms of what future uses would go Malka to Komahana. Secondly, what it would do is it would bisect the expansion area for the campus as it moved in that, in that direction. So those are the two basic reasons we have asked it to be removed.
At the last reading, Planning wasn't here, only Mr. Yara was here, so he had to kind of explain that, and then, you know, I explained to the council members, I was like, "Yeah, you have Mahouli already, and then now you're going to have this second road kind of like parallel, and it's going to go, I guess, connect to Inaco Avenue, or whatever, or to the junction up on the top." So it didn't make sense, and then above Komahana, that property is state property.
Correct.
And I think the community college was looking at trying to develop that area. So then, if we still had that right-of-way, I mean, it's going to go right into their campus, right?
Correct.
And then, I think the last thing is that by doing that intersection would be sight distance to...
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Onishi. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to support this, as I've stated before. Ms. Marx very accurately portrayed my concerns. Having been on many college campuses, both as a student and as a visitor, and being on this particular campus many times, it's a nightmare trying to get in and around that campus. It's a complete nightmare. My personal position is that we are not supposed to be planning for tomorrow, we're supposed to be planning for fifteen, twenty years out, and I see the removal of this road in its entirety, not just reducing the size of it, which is reasonable, removing it in its entirety, or redesigning its exit on a campus, is exactly what we shouldn't do. The whole purpose of a university district is to commercialize an area, and you can't commercialize an area if you can't get into it and get out of it safely, and that's what roads are supposed to do. I am very, very concerned about this. I just don't see this as a reasonable course of action. I think it's unfortunate planning, and I think in fifteen to twenty years, you're going to have a big mess out there. But you know what? I don't live in Hilo, and I'm not going to have to put up with the mess. But people in Hilo and students are going to have to put up with this mess. It's just not right, in my opinion. So, I'm not going to support this because of the road removal in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Eoff?
Uh, Mr. Kanuha, did you want to respond to that, or should I ask my question?
You know, we kind of recognize that too, so what we've been, and perhaps maybe the university representative would also be helpful here, because they haven't, there's an ongoing master plan for the campus, and their concern from their side is that this eighty-foot right-of-way, if it stayed on the map and they were required to build it, would foreclose their options for expanding the university, you know, in that direction. That being said, we have, you know, we've highly encouraged the university in their master planning efforts to basically reroute this eighty-foot right-of-way through, through the middle of the campus that provides the intersection at Komahana at this time, you know, rather than just eliminate it. And, you know, it's my understanding that they're considering it. He'll probably be able to illustrate for you more, but the university also has acreage directly above Komahana in that area, so that existing intersection now, which is, you know, basically serves an access to the campus going Malka, but also as an access to the, to the agricultural station going Malka. Well, all of that eventually will, will be future phases of development for the university. So, you know, our suggestion is that they consider a rerouting of that eighty footer, you know, through the heart of the campus and, and along Malka across Komahana.
Thank you for stating that. That's, that's what I was hoping that you would say, because there are valid concerns, as Ms. Ford has stated, but also what, what Mr. Onishi is explaining about the future plans and, and what that road would interfere with. But there, there are roads within the campus, and if improvements could be made to make some more direct routes that would take people straight up through, that would be the ideal solution. So thank you for stating that for us.
You know, and again, during the, during the public, his, uh, public hearing portion of the Planning Commission, there were some concerns expressed by residents along Mahouli, the lower part of Mahouli, and Kumukuoa, the connector road that, that joins up in terms of what kind of potential traffic impacts could be anticipated if that eighty-foot right-of-way was removed in its entirety, you know, which is why we've, we've advocated quite strongly with the university to consider rerouting that eighty footer into the heart of the campus and going straight on up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eoff. Uh, Mr. Illegon, and then, uh, Mr. Onishi, or Ms. Willie? So, Ms. Illegon, your own.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I have the representative?
Harry Yada, Lead Director of Real Property, University of Hawaii, Hilo.
Mr. Yada, I have a question regard, my concern is also the same with drivability in the campus, because I've, I've been to your campus and I've, I've experienced, and one of the things I wanted to ask you is, well, Director Kanuha, I almost called him council member Kanuha. I wanted to ask you, where were you guys, what's the plan for rerouting? Is that an option, or...
Well, I guess I'll point out that those same zoning maps that have the eighty-foot right-of-way, does, does not show Noel Street. And so, based on some of the concerns raised from the Planning Commission on up, we've had our planners looking at turning Noello basically as a sort of representing a replacement for that right-of-way that we see. So, you know, we are looking at plans where we turn Noello Street and basically terminate around the same area as the eighty-foot on the map, and that'll provide sort of that same true. So instead of another road between Noello and Mahouli, we would turn Noello into that street and basically terminate the same place as where that eighty-foot terminated on Kumukuoa near the bridge. So, you know, that's what we're considering. In terms of going Malka, you know, we're, the community colleges are actually doing planning for the area of Malka, and so if we turn Noello Street into sort of representing that eighty-foot, they will look at connectors between Noello and back to Mahouli as, as sort of an option to promote that circulation. So we are looking at changing some of our internal long-range planning to sort of, you know, address the concerns posed about eliminating this eighty-foot.
So, um, I just want a clarification. On parcel B, you said the Hawaii Community College is looking to...
Yeah, Hawaii Community College is actually, is targeting a hundred acres between Noello and Mahouli, Malka of Komahana, and so they're in the middle of looking, uh, planning that area right now.
Okay. Is there a way to be able to see those plans? Not, not for this purposes, but just to get a grasp of it?
Yeah, I think there, I, I don't know if they have, I mean, they're just starting their planning process. I know they're working with the planners. At some point, I'm confident, they will then take it out to the public to get public input on it, but I'm not sure if they have a plan to...
Just prepping it up, then. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Illegon. Ms. Willie?
Okay, that's fine. Did you follow what he was saying about the re...
Rerouting.
Rerouting. I have a problem with eliminating an option before you pursue the other options. I mean, that's my...
I'm, I was trying to find in the, I'm watching the video of the Windward Planning Commission, and I was trying to find, I think there might be a flood plain through the campus too, and so I don't know if you can speak to that, but that's a problem too. So you can't just move it to the big empty spot because it's empty for a reason, it's a flood plain. And Noello Street, are they, I would ask if they're planning on removing any buildings that are already there, because there's no way you can widen Noello Street. It's, it's like six right-left turns over forty-seven speed bumps. It's not a through street.
Right. And also, when, you know, when you eliminate a right-of-way, you also eliminate it for purposes of maybe just keeping it pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic. I, I just look at Waimea. Waimea, where we have that one intersection, there was a right-of-way. It would have gone through where some of Parker School's new buildings are. It would have eliminated a lot of emergency situations that have occurred, and I'm just always, where we're planning the five years, the twenty years, so I'm, I am concerned about this, and as Ms. Ford said, I, I don't, I don't feel satisfied with the, we are looking at maybe future plannings and reorganizing. I just, that, I, I still have an, I still have a concern there. Based on experiences in my district, where you eliminate it, I just don't want to eliminate an option. I mean, does this, if it said optional, or some way that you're keeping it in the track, it just seems like poor planning to me. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. So we're still in our first round. Mr. Kern hasn't spoken yet. Mr. Kern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, we are on second reading. It should be pretty smooth right now. I, uh, it's my, my philosophy is that the university is a massive, huge project, and it has people that are dedicated to planning the project and making it the best it possibly can be. I don't feel that it's our place to dictate how the university is planned. We're here to look at the land use, the zoning, is that reasonable? Does that, does that make sense for that area? It does. If, it's, you know, it's clear that the director, as well as the applicant, that, that easement doesn't make sense where it is. Does it make sense to have other options? Absolutely. Would it behoove the university to do that for themselves? I would imagine it would be, especially as they want to grow and expand. So to me, it's just, it's kind of, the cause and effect is going to be there to necessitate whatever is going to be necessary to have flow of traffic, be it pedestrian, be it motor vehicle. If not, they're going to have to build a university that doesn't make sense and that doesn't function. And I don't, I don't speak when, when people are speaking, I don't make ultimate comments.
Councilmembers, please keep the chatter down, and have respect for whoever's talking. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Kern.
Yeah, and, and so the university does need work, it also needs money. That's what we're seeing coming in, is, is we're seeing money, we're seeing planning, we're seeing that going on, and to me, it just, if this was really that big of an issue, we should still be at committee going over and going over. It's not that the planning department agrees with it, the university agrees with it. It makes sense to me, and is there going to need to be more infrastructure put in? Absolutely. Is it our place to tell them how and where it's going to go in? I don't think so. So I support this, I think we should just move on. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we covered our first round of, this is going to, Ms. Pointexa, did you want to say something?
I just said that, I supported it in, in committee in the past, and I've come down, you know, through where the astronomy that, et cetera is, you mean, you mean the one? Yeah, and I was okay with that, so I don't know, I didn't see any problem. I've been on that campus, taken classes there, I've, I've been able to move around, and I've looked at their plans, and I'm okay with it, so. Um, and I'm sure you'll have the final say, because is it in your district?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I'd love to hear your point of view. Thank you.
Okay, we're still on first round of questions, or any other discussion? We're going to go to second round? Okay.
Would any of you folks know what the distance between Mahouli's intersection and the other, what, Noello?
Noello.
Noello? What is the distance? At the most, right? I mean, at the most, like, what, quarter mile? Yeah, so then, to put another intersection between a quarter mile, it just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on second round? Mr. Illegon?
I'll make my point, too. I just wanted to mention that you, right now, we don't, for me, I guess, I'll speak for myself, right now, I don't see the vision. You are doing the prep work, and I, I trust the university, and the thing is, I guess the hardest part is for, to eliminate an option, we don't really understand why, what the reason is, what the vision is. So that's what I see that kind of complicate things. Until we know what the final product will be, we don't know why you're doing this. So that's my understanding. I, I know the fact that you're doing the prep work to get to where you want to be, and I, I know the university will be working with us to help us understand that. You're just really good at what you do, that you're so early in doing it. So that's, that's what I see, and I will be supporting this project, and I would like to learn more on what you will prepare for the university and the vision of that campus.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Illegon. Any further discussion on the second round? Mr. Yada?
I just, I just want to say, I mean, obviously, the university is not in the interest of putting together a badly planned university, okay? I mean, that's why, the reason we do our long-range plans, and secondly is, you know, we view the university together with the county as a very valuable partnership. I mean, over the last twenty years, I think the county, the university has put in over sixteen million dollars of sewer lines, water lines, et cetera, et cetera, to be, in basically in reaction to like EISs, EAs that were done for specific projects that indicated these things are needed. So, you know, the university tries to be responsible to, to, you know, address infrastructure, traffic, and those issues as we develop the campus, and we're required to do EISs and so forth, EAs for every single project. So there's, there's that whole process that, you know, sort of guides the development of the university. And so, we appreciate the partnership we have with the county in, in looking at things that would help both the city as well as the university going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Willie, second round?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I think where I'm coming from is what Councilmember Illegon expressed, I, I just don't have that clear vision, and so there is a certain leap of faith. Yes, we want to trust you and believe that's what you're doing, and it's just that in other circumstances where one would assume, where the planning department allowed something that, in my mind, was totally illogical, and just didn't look at any... that in my mind was totally illogical, and just didn't look at any, you know, further down, what is that planning? Not just five years, but ten years. And I think Director Kanua did express some concern. It wasn't something like, oh, no, I've checked this all out, this is fine. It, it did raise some red flags. Um, so I do appreciate what you're saying, Councilmember Kern, but just, it, it is, it's sort of without seeing it, you know, you're, you're making that jump. It isn't sort of like a trust. But I think that what we try to do is just be able to see it, you know, be able to see it and envision that. And I don't know, um, Director Kanua, if there's anything more that you could say to just sort of, um, address that concern that I've said, or, um, Councilmember Iligon and, and Ford said, just...
The interesting thing about this, um, process right now is that the university is, itself is finalizing, you know, their master plan. So perhaps, um, Harry can give you an, an update of where that is. So it's like these two, um, efforts, you know, trying to dovetail with each other.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the, the one thing I can say is because the university is a state institution, we're subject to Chapter three, four, three, and all of the requirements. So it's not like this is your last opportunity for the public or for anybody to review the plans and to have input. So it's, it's a, it's a process. And so I guess what I'm trying to stress is this is not the end of input. I mean, this is not like you approve this and that's it. You know, it's gonna happen the way we want it, and nobody's gonna see it. So because we're a public institution, we're subject to Chapter three, four, three, it's gonna be a process for public input as well as county input in all the planning.
So are you saying that this could, a right-of-way could be put back there at another time?
If the reaction to the master plan in the EA process, the county indicates that there's a need for another road somewhere, that can be commented at any point in that process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, still the second round. Any further comments, council members? No? It's not? Okay, I'm gonna close the discussion. I'll just provide my input, and then we're gonna go to the vote. Okay. The balance points, you know, being brought up. Um, and, uh, when I looked at this issue, I recognized that we all want connector roads. We all do. But one of the things that stood out to me was that, you know, the distance between Mahouli and Noeholo Street is fairly close. You know, and I've been here long enough, lived here my whole life, where I've seen, um, I remember when Comahana didn't have any really, um, stub outs or extra streets. So it's added, um, traffic because we have, um, different buildings, whether it's Emiloa, the, you know, Ag Department, things like that. So those things, they come with, with changes, and that's, um, understood. Um, and I used to travel this road every single morning, brush hour, seven, eight AM, so there is a lot of traffic. Um, and having an additional connector road, it does really seem to be redundant at where it's indicated now. Now, if there's, if the Noeholo Street becomes the connector road, then that makes complete sense, right? Because then you're gonna go Malka, continue down. I don't know where, you know, where you can go below it, but it makes sense to do that. It makes sense for everyone involved, because I cannot see the university doing something that makes the problem worse because it's in their interest to make it work, because they want students to have accessibility, to make it attractive. You, you're not some big fly-by-night organization. You're, you're the state university, right? So it just makes sense that you would wanna make it work along with the county representatives and the community in and of itself. So, um, you know, I acknowledge, you know, there is traffic, um, extreme traffic, right? Adding another road where it's indicated now, um, that doesn't seem to make sense, just based on the location. Having another road, uh, through the planning process, that does make sense, and I think Noeholo is a logical place. It seems extremely wide, Ms. Yada. I mean, when I drive on that, and I drive it often too, it seems extremely wide. There's a lot of speed bumps. That's good, because, you know, people's speed, you know, the greatest kind of on a sleeper angle there. But I do support the amendment because I think it facilitates the process. Just want everyone to know that this is not the be-all, end-all to this issue. I mean, it's, it's part of the planning process. You know, and I think if, uh, along the way, as, as Ms. Yada said, that the master plan is such that they need to, to adjust the road, you know, then they will. Um, but no, this, this, you know, doesn't end today. This is a part of the planning process. And I think this helps, um, helps them as a planning tool. So anyway, that's just my comments. Uh, Mr. Clerk? Ms. Yada?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
No.
Mr. Iligon?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Anishi?
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda, eight ayes and one no. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So Bill one twenty-two passes on second reading. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so council members, do we have any other requests before we, um... Take... Sorry, I lost the train of thought.
Ms. Chair, because of time-wise, I would say let's do all the second reading, the final second reading.
Why are you saying that the first item's gonna take a long time?
I think so, that will. Unless we're gonna go to lunch.
Uh, no, no, let's take, um, well, we could take lunch now and, 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 uh, come back at, um...
But like seconded to... Yeah, that could be so fast.
Really? Okay.
And then we can go lunch.
Well, let's go to the second and final reading then, if there's, uh... Okay, so that's Bill one thirty-one, Mr. Clerk? I'm sorry, one twenty-one. I'm not seeing well either. Bill one? Bill one two one, amends ordinance number zero-three dash one zero-nine, which reclassified lands from single-family residential ten thousand square feet RS-ten to industrial-commercial mixed twenty thousand square feet MCX-twenty at Waikia South Hilo, Hawaii, covered by tax map key two dash two dash zero-five-zero, zero-three-seven and zero-three-eight. Request five-year time extension to comply with condition C, complete construction and change of zone ordinance number zero-three dash one oh-nine. Applicant Vince M. Kimura, approximately forty-five thousand square feet. Planning director recommends favorable recommendation for the five-year time extension to comply with condition C. Reference communication four-one-zero introduced by Mr. Kern by request, first reading October sixteen, twenty thirteen. Mr. Kern?
Ms. Chair, I move to approve Bill one twenty-one.
Seconded by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none. Mr. Clerk? Ms. Yada?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligon?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Anishi?
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda, nine ayes. Thank you. Bill one twenty-one passes on second reading. Next item, Mr. Clerk, on second reading. Bill one three one, amends ordinance number one-three dash six-five, has amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Appropriates revenues in federal grants assistance to firefighters grant twenty twelve prevention and safety nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. Appropriates same to assistance to firefighters grant twenty twelve prevention and safety. Reference communication four-three-three introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading October sixteen, twenty thirteen. Ms. Point Dexter, Bill one thirty-one.
Motion to approve, uh, Bill one thirty-one.
Seconded by Ms. Yada. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none. Mr. Clerk? Ms. Yada?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligon?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Anishi?
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda, nine ayes. Thank you. Bill one thirty-one passes on second reading. Next item? Bill one three two, amends ordinance number one-three dash six-five, has amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Appropriates revenues in federal grants assistance to firefighters grant twenty twelve operations and safety twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Appropriates same to the assistance to firefighters grant twenty twelve operations and safety. Reference communication four-three-four introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading October sixteen, twenty thirteen. Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve Bill one thirty-two.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none. Mr. Clerk? Ms. Yada?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Chair Iligon?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Anishi?
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda, nine ayes. Thank you. Bill one thirty-two passes on second reading. Next item? Bill one three four, amends ordinance number one-three dash six-five, has amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Increases revenues in federal grants Hawaii County Police Department HCPD roadblock program, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Appropriates same to HCPD roadblock program. The funds will be used by the Police Department's roadblock program to conduct driving under the influence DUI checkpoints during the National DUI Campaign. Reference communication four-three-six introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, first reading October sixteen, twenty thirteen. Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve Bill one thirty-four.
Seconded by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none. Mr. Clerk? Ms. Yada?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligon?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Anishi?
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda, nine ayes. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Bill one thirty-four passes on second and final reading. Do you have another request to take out of order, Ms. Point Dexter?
Yes, I'd like to ask that resolution two oh two, uh, dash thirteen, because, um, we're gonna be postponing that. So if we could, um, I guess, read it...
Read that in, okay?
Yeah, read that in, and then I'll make the motion to postpone.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, resolution... Okay. Resolution two oh two dash thirteen authorizes the payment of funds in future fiscal years on a multi-year contract for an independent auditor to perform the annual audit of the accounts and other evidence of financial transactions of the county of, of the county and of every county agency and executive agency. Authorizes the council chair through the legislative auditor to proceed with the warrant of a multi-year contract for an independent auditor to perform required annual audit services covering fiscal years ending June thirtieth, twenty fourteen to June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Reference communication four-eight-eight introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, wave FC. Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve resolution two oh two dash thirteen.
Seconded by Mr. Kern. Ms. Point Dexter?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to postpone resolution two oh two.
To, to what date, Ms.?
Um, to the next council meeting.
Okay, um, that'd be November twentieth, I believe. Yep, okay. A seconded was by Ms. Ford, as I recall, on the motion to postpone to November twentieth. Um, any discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing or seeing none. Mr. Clerk? Ms. Yada?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Iligon?
Aye.
Mr. Kanua?
Aye.
Mr. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Anishi?
Aye.
Ms. Point Dexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda?
Aye.
Chair Shimoda, nine ayes on the motion to postpone. Okay, motion to postpone passes. Anything else, council members? If not, we can probably just take through the, uh, uh, first reading bills and then probably the rest of the resolutions. Any objections to doing that? Okay, let's do, um, Bill one thirty-seven on first reading. If that's where we're at, I think that's where we're at. Bill one thirty-seven, draft two, amends Chapter twelve, Article two of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and five edition, as amended relating to the proceedings for the formation of improvement districts. Clarifies the procedures for the usage of a, of the combined hearing process as it relates to the final details of plans and specifications to be prepared after public hearings. Also adds a ten percent cost overrun threshold to clarify materially significant costs that would trigger a second public hearing. Reference communication four-five-two point two introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, approve FC one oh two. Ms. Point Dexter?
Motion to approve Bill one thirty-seven, draft two, second.
Seconded by Ms. Yada. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I'm not going to support this. Most of this I would support. The part that I have a problem with is the ten percent. The reason I have a problem with the ten percent is that if we were looking at a mega-million-dollar project, like for instance, the building of the West Hawaii Civic Center, a ten percent overrun would be five million dollars. Things like that should be coming to the council. It shouldn't just go... Ten percent doesn't sound bad until you look at the size of some projects. Um, there's nothing in this particular bill that, that caps it at ten percent or not to exceed X amount of dollars. And so for that reason, I won't be supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ford, any other discussion on this issue? No, Ms. Willie?
Um, is, uh, can I ask Ms. Point Dexter a question?
Yes.
Would you have a problem with putting not to exceed a certain amount so that it, uh, amendment? In other words, Ms. Ford's concern, in other words, ten percent, you know, not rated numbers, but...
Not to exceed ten percent?
Well, in other words, where it's ten percent, but what if it's, um, sometimes ten percent can be a big deal over a certain amount? Um, would you be willing to put an amendment whereafter, what, um, and maybe Yada, if you're unsure...
Yeah, because I, I don't know, I would have to still talk with some of the finance department.
I'll entertain them.
Okay, can I?
And I'll yield just to get some other...
But Karen can...
I, I think Mr. Okamoto could explain it.
Okay, so Ms. Willie, you yielded the floor, is that correct? Okay, Ms. Yada, you have the floor.
My understanding is the ten percent has to do with whether or not a second public hearing would be required for those involved in an improvement district assessment. Correct?
Correct. Mike Okamoto, Treasurer. Um, we, we put this provision in because of, you know, the improvement district process is such a lengthy process. And, um, the last improvement district that we did, um, you know, we, we did go through the two-hearing process. And what happened was that the, um, the time that it took, uh, between the time we had a bid and the expiration of that bid amount expired. So we had to go back and ask the contractor, um, for an extension. And, um, uh, we thought this provision would, um, uh, not only save time, but, um, you know, there's a lot of effort in, in putting together another public hearing when, um, I think, uh, you know, the residents, um, a ten percent figure is acceptable for them. So that's the reason why we put this provision in, just, just to be more efficient.
Thank you. Yes, the ten percent is shared by the people in the, in the district. It's not a cost incurred to the county. So, and I think it's reasonable because I've been involved in several of these improvement districts being formed. And, um, the time and, and, um, confusion to have to have two public hearings is, is more costly to the county, actually. So, and normally the assessment, I mean, it could be a little bit lower, a little bit higher, but it's generally in the ballpark. So...
I mean, uh, you know, ten percent is an arbitrary figure, so, um, I mean, you, you could suggest another figure. But, um, you know, if you think about it, you know, if it was, you know, one percent or whatever, um, and having to go through this whole process again, and not only a public hearing, but a couple of more resolutions, then, um, you know, there's, there's a figure in there that makes sense, I think. I don't know if ten percent is the figure.
Okay, well, I'll yield, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Yada. Okay, we're still on first round. Ms. Ford, you had your opportunities. I'm just gonna make sure. First round, is that it? Okay, so then you're ahead of Ms. Willie. Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
Thank you. Ten percent is not an unreasonable number. I mean, when you're doing construction, a ten percent variance is not unusual. It's kind of part of the industry standard. It's not ten percent that I'm objecting to. It's the fact that it could wind up being millions of dollars. And it's very easy to say, well, it won't cost the county any money because it's an improvement district, but it will cost the people in the improvement district. If it's a five-million-dollar hit, that means that amount's gonna be added to their taxes for the next twenty-five, thirty, or thirty-five years, and they should have a right to weigh in on it. You know, it's, it's not about whether it costs the county money. It's about these guys voted to do an improvement to this district based on X amount of dollars. And ten percent of, I'm making this up now, three, four million dollars might not be much. And, you know, the hit might be spread out well enough, but if it's millions of dollars, the hit could be substantial. And that's my concern. It's not about whether it's gonna cost the county. It's what it's gonna cost the people who voted to be in that improvement district. They have a right to know if it's gonna be millions of dollars.
So, Ms. Ford, while you're still, you still have the floor, so what's your suggestion then?
I think we should postpone this. I think we need to get, um, whoever's involved in this and put in a not to exceed X number of dollars.
Okay, just want to hear where you're coming from. No, no, that's fine. Thank you. Ms. Point Dexter?
Um, so what are the unintended consequences on postponing this and going on? Um, so what are the unintended con- consequences on postponing this and going on and on with this? I mean, because time is money.
Yes. I, I, if this was an objection of the council, I would just say delete the provision entirely and take it up later, because we do have an active improvement district, and this is, uh, meant to, um, you know, speed up this improvement district. So if this is an objection, I would, I would just say delete it altogether and just strike this provision. Um, so that's my suggestion.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from more council members.
Okay, well, we're still on first reading, so there's time for an amendment. Ms. Point Dexter, you relate Christopher's floor?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kern.
Thank you. I, I agree, 10% is pretty much industry standard, but I also agree, once it hits a third, certain threshold, it can become a lot of money. So this could simply be resolved by 10% or $1 million, $2 million, not whatever's, whatever's greater. You know what I mean? Like, we could easily put in a 10% figure that would pretty much cover anything, but then we look at a project that's maybe $20 million, 10% of that is $2 million bucks. Is that a, a threshold that we say, okay? Maybe the people should have another own, um, public test, you know, public hearing on that? So that could be done, to postpone it, or if somebody could put something like that together.
Well, I mean, we're just on first reading, so we could still move this forward, and then amendments could come second reading.
Absolutely.
So I think that's the reasonable thing to do, Ms. Ford.
You know, I, I would be willing, I think your suggestion is reasonable. I understand the time element that you're having to deal with. Um, I don't have a problem doing the amendment and just striking out the 10% at this point in time, and let's bring that back as a second bill, so that we can let the public weigh in on it.
Okay.
And I'm willing to do that.
Okay. Ms. Yoff.
Would that, um, in any way jeopardize the improvement district that's current?
Well, um, if you do strike it and say you go 1% over, you know, we'd have to do a second hearing, so...
I, I, I don't support that. I'd rather, um, if we moved it to second reading and if we can come up with an amendment by then, that would be, um, reasonable. Um, I'd prefer to see that, because I'm, um, I'm okay with it the way it is.
Okay.
But, okay.
Okay. Mr. Illegon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also support moving on to the second reading, and by that time, we'll have amendments ready.
Okay. Last comment, Mr., oh, no, you didn't talk, Mr. Anishi. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So, Kona, I guess if you can explain a little bit more of how this process, because, okay, so if someone wants to come in for an improvement district, that those property owners are gonna be assessed this 10%?
No, no.
Okay, what?
There's, there's, uh, well, there's a feasibility study that's gonna be done. In fact, for this coming, upcoming improvement district, the, uh, that study is gonna be heard on the next committee meetings, on the 19th, I believe. But anyway, um, the costs are estimated, and then, uh, a number of participants or assessees get their paraded share. So when the bid goes out, um, that, that bid is...
So say the bid is $5 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that, that bid is shared by all the, the assessees. Now, um, if the bid comes in at $6 million, uh, that's a significant material increase, so we'd have a second public hearing. But what we're saying is that what happens if it's $5 million and $5,100,000? Do we hold up the process and go to a second public hearing? Or is this immaterial that, um, you know, we, the, uh, the property owners will accept a slight increase in their assessment, and we can just go through without the second public hearing?
Okay, so say, so now, what you say, okay, so if the project is $5 million, 10% would be $500,000.
Right. So whatever their assessment, it would go up another 10%. Right. Yeah, so, I mean, if...
So, so what the discussion is, like, they, like Ms. Ford mentioned, like, if it goes like two, three, I mean, like, if, if this goes like to $2 million, $3 million, for me, that means that project had to be like $10 million.
$20 million.
Yeah, or whatever. Right, right. So, so the thing is, well, I think it's not gonna be that way off, or it could be. I mean, what, what is, what have you seen in the past? What is...
Well, the, the last, um, improvement district, um, which we just finished in September, uh, actually was a little below the estimate, but that's, that's a different time. The one before that, in 2004, it did exceed, um, the estimated amount, and we did go on to, we did do another, uh, public hearing.
And where was that?
Uh...
Was it economy good, or what?
No, um, uh, it, it was a lot better than it was now, yeah, so...